City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, April 7, 2025. I want to thank everybody who has joined us here this evening in person. It is great to see so many members of the public here. And also, everybody that is watching us online, welcome. As we start, I want to introduce the people sitting up here. On my far right, we have our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to Mac, we have Councilman Lauren Wise. Next to Lauren, we have Councilwoman Pamela Holder. Next to Pamela, we have Councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Coploff. On my immediate left, we have our city clerk, Denise Hodston. Next to Denise, we have Mayor Protem and Councilman Gary Daniel. Next to Gary, we've got Councilman Erin Baker. And next to Erin, we have our city manager, Wilson Hooper. And with that, I'm going to ask Reverend Dr. Pamela Holder. So Councilwoman Holder has multiple titles. She is also the pastor at Bethel A Baptist Church. And Pastor Holder, would you please do the invocation for us?
Let us center and bow our heads in prayer. Almighty God, how excellent is your name in all the earth. Thank you, Lord, for this day that you've made, and we rejoice and are glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for this time of coming together. We ask, Lord, that your presence will be here. You know what the vision is for Brevard. You know what our hopes are for Brevard, to help, to reach out, to be there. We can't do it without you. We ask, Lord, that you would guide our minds and our thoughts tonight, that your will be done. You're gracious, you're kind, you're loving. You have everything we need. We ask, Lord, that you would supply, even now, your thoughts to be our thoughts. We thank you, Lord, for everyone who is here and everyone in the Brevard city. Lord, thank you for this time, and we give you the praise for it. Good success. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Holder. If everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Thank you. Council members, you have the draft agenda in front of you. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Council members, you've got the draft minutes of the March 17, 2025, regular meeting. Are there any corrections or modifications to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. At this time, we have public comment. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on the agenda. Anyone who wants to speak must register with the city clerk, which is the sign-up sheet. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Limit comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. And I will give you a 30-second warning when you're getting close to your time. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. Groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. I will call people up in the order that they signed. Our first public comment is Mr. Jimmy Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor Coploff, council members. First of all, I would like to give a very sincere thank you to everyone, everyone, for what you do. I've been close enough to this process over the years that I know how thankless it can be and how hard that work is, and I want to say thank you for that. A broad little show and tell, if I can hand that to the ladies just to the seat. My concern tonight, and I've already had part of it satisfied, I was speaking with Nicole with Harvard a few minutes ago, and my concern is Jordan Street. And specifically, the striking and the loading zone that went away on Jordan Street. We own the property where Rockies Corner Market in Rockies is, as well as Newfound Artisans back on Jordan Street. And I've just spent a fair amount of time on that order, and I just, you know, I see a lot of messes going on, people trying to, trucks trying to get in and out and get unloaded. You know, those pictures, or some of those pictures, the loading zone is still there, and it's just, it's a tough spot. So my real request tonight was that while it is unstriped and before it gets restriped, I would very much like for there to be a conversation and, you know, perhaps involve some of the stakeholders on the street as to that. But my understanding is it actually is on the agenda for the next downtown master plan meeting, so my fears there are alleviated. It sounds like there will be that discussion, and I appreciate that. I'd like to be part of that. Sort of in the other realm, sure to stem me to get here, I got one of these the other night when I was in the, I was down at the Jordan Street parking lot, the city lot, and I got it at 5:00 in the afternoon, and I literally had popped in for about 15 minutes to load up some tools in the attic and leave. And I got the $50 citation, which I'm not going to peel, I'm going to pay it because I know the rules, and I broke them. You know, I would only comment that I feel like $50 is excessive. I think that, you know, particularly with visitors and whatnot, I, you know, I was president of Harvard when this, there was a lot of discussion about the parking and the paid parking strategies and whatnot.
30 seconds.
And I just, I feel like a lot of that needs to be revisited at this point in time, too. We have paid lots on the periphery and free parking, you know, we're giving the best parking away and making people pay park, park on the peripheries, and I think that's just a little bit counterintuitive to human nature. But anyhow, I'd like to be part of that discussion, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Our next speaker is Ashley Hart. Ms. Hart?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me be here today. My name is Ashley Hart. I come to you today not only as a concerned citizen, but quite frankly, a fed-up one. We have seen protest after protest after protest after protest this year. They have went from five, 10, to numbers upwards to 300. And quite frankly, we have a mayor who does nothing but encourage this behavior from not only citizens of Transylvania County in Brevard, but of other counties that have come to protest as well. On President's Day, we had 130 people protest. On March 1, at the Pisgah National Forest, we had about 200 people. At the hands-off protest Saturday, there was upwards to 300 people. You guys see the trend here? These protests are getting bigger and bigger from out-of-towners who only show up to get Protest, once a symbol of democracy, are now spiraling out of control. Sidewalks are clogged, making it impossible to walk without weaving through obnoxiously loud paid protesters. And don't forget the rudeness. My personal experience with the far-left radicals who jam up Brevard, are they as rude as they can be. I have a list of names I have been called by the same people who say my party is just so awful. I won't say the names that I've been called, but I will say I am glad that I wear a body cam to protect myself from any falsehoods that may arrive. Not to mention how these protesters trample all over Common Courtesy, leaving litter behind, and walking all over the grass in the courthouse property. I am tired of it, as you guys can probably tell. And I know I'm not alone. We deserve better than this. We deserve peaceful streets, respectful neighbors, and a community that works together and not against itself. It's time that we demand order and not just hope for it. Maureen, please stop encouraging the protests here. We don't want it, and we don't need it. I encourage you all to find a better way to advocate for what you want instead of causing chaos in Brevard. And I would like to say, hands off Brevard.
Time, Ms. Hart. Thank you, Ms. Hart. Our next speaker is Rodney Lox.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Rodney Lox. I spoke to you before. I attended your priority-setting retreat, and I saw you had a chart with a triangle. One side was equipment, one side was tourism, the base was affordable housing costs. I want to remind you that you should not only cater to the tourists, you need to help make life better for people who work and live in Brevard. May I remind you of the own chart, and I gave that to Denise to hand out? And it says, people who work in Brevard cannot afford to rent much less by homes in Brevard. You have a vision for Brevard, an action plan with goals and objectives. The budget you pass is to help implement that plan and fulfill the vision. I suggest you remind your constituents what council is trying to do. The goal is to be seen as the solution to problems, not the problem itself. You have hard decisions to make, I only hope you make the right decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Lox. All right, that is everybody with our public comment. And with this, we are going to move into certificates, awards, and recognition. And we're going to start with something we're all looking forward to, and that is the oath of office for Erin Winans. He is going to be taking the oath of office as our new wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Erin, you got to come up here. You can't do it from back there. And Denise, our city clerk, will be administering it.
Let me go grab the Bible.
Oh, all right, well, while she's grabbing the Bible, you all might remember, I think it was our last meeting, that we did the 45-year recognition for Emery Owen as he retired from the wastewater treatment plant. Well, Erin is his replacement, so he has some very big shoes to fill and a lot of years.
You don't have 45.
You don't have 45. But Erin has been with us for three years, is that right? Three and a half years. So he's been out there, very experienced, and we are very excited that he is taking on this new role, so.
I'm looking forward to it.
Okay.
Who would like to hold the Bible? Mr. Hooper.
This way.
So you need to put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me if you would. I, Erin Winans.
Aye, Erin Winans.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Support the Constitutions and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As wastewater treatment plant supervisor.
As wastewater treatment plant supervisor.
Slash operator in responsible charge.
Slash operator in responsible charge. So, there you go.
Okay, congratulations. That's it, you're done.
All right, well, we have two more proclamations. All right, and I would like to ask Cindy Donaldson and Melissa Smith. Anyone else coming up? Are you, no, okay, all right, just one, sure. You know, we do these proclamations because we want to emphasize the importance of things. And this month, we have two, for this meeting, we have two proclamations. And the first one, I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to ask the ladies to talk a little bit about. Anyways, this is proclamation number 2025 TAC 05, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April of 2025. Whereas nationally, one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of sexual assault in their lifetime. Listen to these numbers, folks. Those are pretty stark. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month draws attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has implications for every community member. And whereas there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence through prevention education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. Whereas anyone can be a leader in preventing and ending sexual violence. As employers, educators, parents, and friends, we all have an obligation to uphold the basic principle that every individual should be freed from violence and fear. And whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse can happen anywhere, including in online spaces. For too long, harassment, cyberbullying, and sexual abuse and exploitation have come to be expected as typical and unavoidable behaviors online. Whereas the theme for Sexual Assault Awareness Month this year is, quote, "Together we act, united we change," unquote, highlights the importance of working together to address and prevent sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Therefore, it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Brevard, North Carolina, the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of Brevard to work together to eliminate sexual assault from our community, to keep our community members safe from this crime, and to stand with survivors and victims of sexual assault. Signed, Maureen Coploff, 7th day of April, 2025. And Cindy and Melissa, they are here from SAFE. And so I want to give you a couple of minutes to talk about SAFE and what you do and the important work that SAFE brings to our community, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for spotlighting this and giving us this proclamation this evening. I think Mayor Maureen still under many of the statistics in her proclamation, but I wanted to share that over 53% of Winans and over 29% of men reported experiencing contact sexual violence. More than one in four non-Hispanic Black women in the United States were raped in their lifetime. Those are pretty startling statistics, and certainly not something that we'd like to talk about in public. And I think, as the proclamation said, it's education, it's awareness, and it's kind of sharing resources. And so the resource that I have, we have a really lucky parent in Brevard, who is SAFE Councilman. And I'm the president of the board, so I don't do the heavy lifting like Melissa does or Bronwyn does, but the people that work there work hard to make sure that families, children, women, and men are protected. We have our shelter, we have therapy. Many of you know Sally Steff, who has been safe for over 20 years. Sally's recently moved to Iowa. I told her not to go, that's all I'm hearing from. But we have a new executive director that started today, Jim Spaker, and we hope to have an opportunity for you all to meet him. And so please, if you see something, say something. It's, like I said, not comfortable. Maggie back there was a long time. Board member at SAFE, and Dr. Holder is a current board member with me. So I feel like we've got people that speak up for us, speak up for our clients, and obviously we have a city that cares, too. So thank you very much. This is a heavy lift.
So I just wanted to highlight, because it is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, some of the services that SAFE provides specifically for this. We do hospital accompaniment, so if a rape victim goes to the hospital, you can call SAFE, and they will, we will send someone to meet them at the hospital, because that experience in and of itself, after having been traumatized, can be also traumatizing. And so we offer companionship and somebody to be there as an advocate for a person. We also offer court advocacy, so if the person decides to press charges, we're not lawyers, but we will go and sit and be with the person when they are there through that experience. We also offer, as Cindy said, counseling for adults and children, both. So we have lots of resources that we can share, and we would like to share. So if you either know someone who has been sexually assaulted or has ever finds themselves in that situation, we are a 24/7 organization, so they can always reach someone.
And I just want to say, well, first, we also, did we get a good picture, Becky?
Or did we get another one?
Let's go, let's go, here, holding the proclamation.
Can I have you all come over a little bit soon?
Okay.
Let's have work.
Okay. All right. There you go.
Excellent.
I just want to say that we are so fortunate to have an organization like SAFE. You know, the city can't do everything. The city cannot provide enough services to somebody that's a victim in that type of situation. And the fact that we have a nonprofit that is here that provides that level of support in what has to be the most devastating of times for anyone that has experienced this, I just want to say personally, thank you, and on behalf of our elected officials, thank you, and on behalf of our community, thank you. You play such an important role, and we are so glad to collaborate and to be your partner. And I look forward to meeting your new executive director. Definitely, first day, okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, thank you. All right, and Jim Hardy, would you please come up? Now, I had to write this down because Jim's title is so long, I couldn't remember it. But Jim is the co-founder and executive board member of the Three Con Reentry Council. So that is why he is here. And, well, I wrote it down. And we're going to talk about Second Chance Month. Proclamation number 2025 TAC 06, designation of April as Second Chance Month. Whereas every person is endowed with human dignity and value, and whereas redemption and second chances are American values, and whereas an estimated 70 million American citizens have a criminal record, and whereas those individuals who have paid their debt after committing a crime face significant barriers, also known as collateral consequences, to reintegrating into society. And whereas gaining meaningful employment is one of the most significant predictors of successful reentry, and 90% of those who have been incarcerated struggle to find employment because of societal and legal barriers. Whereas while education is also a significant predictor of successful reentry, those with a criminal record have significant difficulty acquiring admission to and funding for educational programs. And whereas people with a criminal history also face significant barriers in securing a place to live, and this inability to access housing has been found to increase the number of individuals returning to prison. And whereas these and other barriers prevent the 70 million Americans with criminal records from contributing fully to their families and communities, which negatively impacts the well-being of their children and families for generations. Whereas the designation of April as Second Chance Month can contribute to increased awareness about the challenges faced by those who have paid their debt and generate opportunities for individuals, employers, congregations, and communities to extend second chances. Now therefore, I, Maureen Coploff, Mayor of Brevard, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Second Chance Month. During this month, I call on residents to honor the work of those who strive to remove barriers that prevent individuals with a criminal record from becoming productive members of society and to observe Second Chance Month through actions and programs that promote opportunities to unlock second chances. Thank you so much, Jim, for all the work that you, oh, I went for the photo. That you and the Second Chance Reentry Group does, because, you know, our goal is that everybody is a productive member of our society. And I know last year, we had, we did this reentry simulation that I went to, because for most of us, we can't really imagine the barriers that exist for somebody who has come out, has served their time, they've done their time, they're ready to be reintegrated. There are so many barriers that it's almost impossible for them to be reintegrated into society. And it made it very clear to me, that simulation that I believe it was Blue Ridge, the college did, or?
No, it's at the Brevard Tower.
Oh, Brevard College, okay, yeah. I just remember all the students there. But anyways, if you would say a little bit about what your group does.
On behalf of all those who are just as involved and all those who are working to help them turn their lives around and become productive citizens, I want to thank you, Mayor Coploff, and the city council for this incredibly important proclamation that shines us a light on how broken our criminal justice system is. Drug war has focused only on punishment and not on rehabilitation. As a result, America is now the world's leading jailer. On a per capita basis, we jail more people than On a per capita basis, we jail more people than any other government or nation on the earth. And this falls especially hard on the poor and on minorities. Seventy to 100 million people are justice-involved, have been arrested or have a criminal record. That's somewhere between one in four of us to one in three of us. Nearly 2 million people are locked up as we speak, at a cost of about $80 billion a year just to lock them up. And our system is failing because 70% of those, almost seven in 10, will return to jail or prison after their release. And so what Second Chances is about is giving these people the support and the hope that they need to turn their lives around and become successful, productive citizens and join all of us in contributing to our, to our communities rather than taking from them. Those released face incredible obstacles. Many of them can't read, and many of them are broke and poor. They're turned out with no money, with no home, with no transportation, with no connections. Some of them have lost their driver's licenses. And if you go through a reentry simulation, you can only appreciate this, as Maureen Koploff says, if you've been, if you've been through it. As a member of St. Philip's Prison Ministry Team, I saw this firsthand, and I'd like to invite the people who are here to, to share this, to stand up for just a minute, please. Included is Becky Harris, who is our reentry specialist in the jail now, and she helps those people to connect with services before they are released, which is something that's incredibly special right now. So in 2018, we began an initiative to establish a reentry council in Transylvania County. Maureen Koploff was one of our original board members. The purpose is to support those recently released from incarceration on their journey to become successful citizens and avoid reincarceration. Today, we are known as 3CON. That stands for Transylvania, Henderson, Reentry Connection. Very soon, and we hope within the next few months, we will receive full North Carolina certification and funding to join the other 23 reentry councils in North Carolina. Martin Luther King said famously, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that." As we work to reform our broken, oh, and he also said, "Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." As we work to reform our broken criminal justice system, I suggest we be guided by Dr. King's message. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to the council.
Jim.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we are moving on to special presentations. And at this point, we have the Harder Brevard Annual Update, and I believe Nicole Bentley, the Executive Director of Harder Brevard, is going to be presenting it.
No, no, go to the slideshow.
All right, awesome. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We have a lot to share with you tonight with our annual report. I can't speak louder.
So the people.
Yes, yes, absolutely. We have a lot to celebrate. This is our annual report that recaps our accomplishments from 2024. It will also include some of the survey results that we do each year. That's part of our contract with the city. Before we get started, I know you're all wondering, you should see the other guy, by the way. Let's pop in here. Okay. Every year, I do this because it is a little bit strange. People constantly ask, who is the Harder Brevard? What is the Harder Brevard? What do we do? Where is it located? And there are a lot of answers to this. I'd like to say that the Harder Brevard is our economic center. It is the largest employer in the county. Think about it as a whole. It is a destination for visitors. It's a must-stop when you're visit to Brevard or Transylvania County, and it's a gathering place for our community. We see so many people who come downtown for our signature events, like White Squirrel Weekend, our holiday celebrations, and it makes downtown a very special place for me. At the core, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was formed in 1993. Since then, we have contracted with the city of Brevard to provide community and economic development services. We hope to continue that relationship with the city. It's a great, I think, I think it's a great relationship. We've grown over the past few years. This is my sixth year with the organization, and I feel like we have a better working relationship than we have since I arrived. We are, our mission is really to make sure that downtown is vibrant and thriving, and we do that through a variety of ways that we'll dig in tonight. We are also volunteers. We have two paid staff members, and we relied on 306 volunteers last year to do our scope of work, do 18 events and over 2,000 hours. That not only includes our committee members and our Harder Brevard Board of Directors, but all of the folks you see at events, those are volunteers who dedicate their time and service to us. And just so you understand, it takes about 150 volunteer shifts to pull off White Squirrel Weekend, about 90 shifts for Halloween Fest. So it is certainly not easy to do without the help of our community. We have four committees that are all made up of Harder Brevard Board members, downtown business owners, and other stakeholders, all volunteers. We meet monthly. They help us and are responsible for shaping our scope of work and our annual work planning. And Sammy DeSkrall, who is a volunteer and sometimes fallen told. Each year, we try to focus on four main areas and work those into each of those work plans. We are a champion for downtown. We serve as the voice of downtown, and we try to communicate needs as well as concerns to you as the city, but also to Main Street and work through things that we can do to try to find resources and implement change for them. We want to cultivate a strong sense of place through design, beautification efforts, as well as public art. We want to make sure we have a strong, a place-based economic development that's also rooted in historic preservation. And finally, we want to make sure we engage our community. We want to make sure that downtown is a place for everyone, whether it's an event, whether it's shopping, or whether it's just sitting on a bench downtown. Now, everybody's favorite thing are our survey results. I've sort of sandwiched them in because this is the meat of this presentation. Every year, we ask the same questions. That's part of our annual Economic Impact Survey that is, we are responsible to reporting to North Carolina Main Street, but we also ask some questions that are part of our contract to fulfill our requirement with the city. That's our annual need survey. One is around events because many people do know us as the Festival Folks. How do you feel about the economic impact of events on your downtown business? It doesn't change much year to year, but this year, we did tip the scale and finally a little bit more, feel like it's positive for the business. Forty-nine percent. Thirty-seven percent said that it was a detraction from their business. Twelve percent felt like it was neutral, and then another 2% said it did not apply to them because of their type of business. I think it's important to note that this is not just Harder Brevard events, but this is all events that are held in the downtown core. We asked them, what are the top three things that are impacting the success of your business? We'll start with the lower ones first. Local politics, policies from the city, inflation, the cost of doing business was on there, ongoing construction and street closures, still just 6% of folks, employee shortage, and this is the third year in a row that that has entered the survey. Lack of wayfinding, that's always been on the survey as an answer, and of course, everyone's favorite, parking. 62% of people say that parking for visitors as well as their employees is a hindrance to the, the success of their business. We ask each year, what would they like the Harder Brevard to focus on? In 2025, we're about to host our annual meeting. That is actually going to be a public input session from stakeholders where we are looking to think about, what should we focus on for the next five years? Oh, this keeps coming up, and so this is something you'll hear me talk about a little bit later, but advocacy for downtown businesses, residents, and our property owners scored at 95%. Improved parking solutions for employees and visitors with 92%. Enhanced security and surveillance to deter vandalism was high on this list, and this is the first year that this has shown up on this survey. Increased access to downtown bathrooms, this continues to be an issue for downtown businesses as well as visitors. Enhanced maintenance of sidewalks and infrastructure, this is something that has been on the list, but I think we've seen some progress, especially partnership with the city and our downtown public works. People want more public art and other projects to attract downtown that's not an event. Some people want more events. And lastly, this is an interesting thing for me, that they wanted to build on a greater residential community engagement, because downtown residents do make up the Harder Brevard, even though it's a much smaller portion than businesses. All right, moving on. We are part of Main Street America. That started in the 1980s as a way to revitalize urban centers. All Main Street programs, not only in North Carolina, but throughout the nation, use the four-point approach. It can be a little bit esoteric, but it's pretty easy to break down, so let's do that. Start with economic vitality at its base, that's just economic development. Again, specifically for Main Street, it is place-based and historic preservation-based. Each year, as part of the survey that we conduct, we ask our businesses about their employee retention, loss of employees, any improvements that they made to their space. And as you can see, we had 11 new businesses last year, so that's net new businesses, 38 jobs that regained. We had 16 businesses that either expanded or did some type of significant improvement to their building. Again, over 2,000 hours in volunteer, and over $6 million in total public and private investment, and that's just in eight blocks of downtown. I do this every year. It's our 31st year, so I think it's important to see that over the years, we have had significant growth in our urban center that ends with around $62 million in investment for public and private investment in downtown. So good we do it well. Next, we talk about design. Again, this is just thinking about creating a place that people want to be in. It's people-centered public spaces that are inviting and inclusive. This past year, we had some really awesome projects that came to fruition. One is a partnership with the city and Transylvania County Tourism that gave us our lovely Lauren Mary Macon mural that's out of Plaza. Other things that we do that people don't know about. We offer grants directly to downtown businesses who look to either improve their facades or awnings, who hope to do some type of historic renovation or preservation of their space, and then also any types of beautification. So if they wanted to signage or something like that, we can help them with funds that we allocate each year in our operating budget. We have access to UNCGA's free facade design. The last business that we saw take advantage of that was 3O, which is formerly on West Main Street, and now our newest business, the Radiant Boutique. We also conduct an annual walkable center assessment. I'm not going to get into that because the following presentation is going to be a deep dive into that study from this year. And this past year, we worked really hard with the city to make sure that we were able to communicate with stakeholders about the ongoing construction in Times Arcade Alley. At the end, I think we have a beautiful improvement there that's in the center of downtown. Some other numbers this past year, we received $117,000 in grant awards to help support our scope of work. We gave out 18 grants to businesses downtown through our Walkable Center Assessment that we presented to you last year. City Council allocated funds to address issues in the, that were identified in the Walkable Center Assessment. Those are numbers that the city obviously worked through with the downtown Main, Main Street and Scrapescrepe. We gave away $48,000 last year to downtown businesses. Organization. So at its core, that means making sure that we've got a good organization, we have an operating board of directors, but for us, it also means making sure that we have strong partnerships with the city, with the county, with our peers, who are also focused on business support, and for those who sometimes, it's an interesting partnership so that we can make things happen. A lot of times, people ask me, Nicole, why don't we hold events in Piscatafors? Not the Harder Brevard. But we can sometimes develop some unique partnerships so that we can do things that are outside of the downtown. For us, as a board, we make sure that we spend at least 90% of our time, tools, and talents focused on the district. And last, our organization. Again, I mentioned it earlier, but we could not do this work without the support of our board of directors. If you are on the board or a committee member, would you raise your hand? I won't make you stand. And, and lastly, we'll talk about promotions. So I think for many years, the Harder Brevard were just known as the Festival Folks, but we are also responsible for making sure that we market downtown, that we are in charge of the branding for downtown. Our signature events and festivals, certainly a huge portion of this, but making sure that we have other things that drive economic vitality of downtown. This past year, we did, launched a social district. We work with the Chamber through the local Transylvania program. Just some stats for you to see, and we have a pretty strong newsletter. We had over a million impressions on Facebook and Instagram last year. When I took this job six years ago, we had 80 followers on Facebook, so for us, this is pretty awesome and a great way for us to communicate that. I thought it was also important just to show the economic impact of the social district. So we have 27 participating businesses, and we estimate through sticker sales that we actually manage around $127,000 of direct economic impact to businesses this past year. So that's pretty awesome, if you think about that. We also redid our new shopping and dining guide this year that we distribute about 16,000 of those annually. They go out to the obvious, all the obvious places like the visitor center, but also we'll have reunions and weddings for folks who really want to have those. This year, we did a study showing all of our public art, parking, and other things that could enhance the visitor experience. We have $75,000 annual attendees this year, and that is a record for us. We celebrated our 20th anniversary of White Squirrel Weekend, our 40th anniversary of Halloween Fest. So I just think that this shows some strong growth and just that we really are finally, I feel like, hitting all of the things in promotion that include events and other things that are important to the district. Based on the surveys and just things we've been talking about today, placemaking is something that we're going to continue to, to focus on. We want to make sure that we know that having a place that people want to be in is directly tied to the economic health of our downtown. Advocacy, making sure that we represent the interests of downtown businesses, but also making sure that they understand local decisions from the city or county and what, how that impacts them, and sometimes, as intermediary, it's not always just saying what they need or want, it's making sure they understand the other side of that as well. We have heard continually that there are issues with employee and workforce for downtown, so we're committed to working with our other nonprofits who are business-focused, as well as Blue Ridge Community College, to make sure that our businesses can grow and have access to qualified employees. What that means for downtown is more job creation, more community engagement, increase in property values. Our long-term goals have been the same, and these may change as we move forward in our strategic planning, but we want to attract new businesses that are complementary to our independent landscape that we have. We want to continue to improve infrastructure so that it is a safe place for people to meet, and something that's important to me is that we do make sure that we have sustainable growth, and we consider environmental stewardship. Last year, we had a lot of projects that we accomplished, and there were so many things to celebrate. Of course, Hurricane Helene came, and for us, we worked hard to reignite the Transylvania Tomorrow's Small Business Emergency Relief Fund. This for us is probably the best example we have of partnership as we work with the Chamber of Commerce, Transylvania County Tourism, the Economic Alliance, and Blue Ridge Community College to serve any businesses who were impacted directly by a Of course, Hurricane Helene came, and for us, we worked hard to reignite the Transylvania Tomorrow Small Business Emergency Relief Fund. This, for us, is probably the best example we have of partnership as we work with the Chamber of Commerce, Transylvania County Tourism, the Economic Alliance, and Blueridge Community College to serve any businesses who were impacted directly by Helene. This did begin in COVID. We raised $250,000 for that initiative. We raised $400,000 at the end of last year. These numbers only reflect what was awarded through December 31st. We're already on to our second round of funding for this year, so this is pretty awesome, and this shows not only, I think, the power of partnership, but how much our community respects our downtown and small business community, as this is an example, as I mentioned earlier, some of that is countywide. And we were able to throw a recovery concert in conjunction with Halloween Fest that was so successful that we are planning to actually hold an evening concert this year in conjunction with Halloween Fest. Future projects. Our board, our committees, and our plan of work say that these are things we need to focus on. We know we can't do them alone, and certainly, I don't have solutions for all of them, but parking, access to public restrooms, all very important. And then thinking about the Acusa Trail connection to downtown is something that our Built Environment Committee has worked on. We also presented that to the Acusa Trail Committee, and we hope to see more work on that in the future. Ultimately, we just keep listening. We're always open, we love to hear feedback, whether you're a member of the Heart of Brevard or you're just a community member. It's important for us to have this feedback so that we can use that for our strategic planning and for property setting. I think that I'm under my time limit, but... So I'm happy to answer any questions from council, if you have any at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Heart of Brevard? Mr. Baker?
I don't think I have any questions, but I'll just make a few comments and thank you, Nicole, for that, and thanks to the Heart of Brevard. I think, you know, we are so lucky to have the downtown that we have. I don't want to pick on Mills River, but I drive through there all the time, and it drives me nuts that they have no, you can't tell where the middle of that place is. And I was just, I just wrote down, what do you think Mills River would pay to have a downtown like we have? I mean, it is impossible to put a price tag on that. And our partnership, I think, with the Heart of Brevard over the years is a huge reason why we still have a vibrant and thriving downtown today. You know, we've invested a lot with improvements downtown, and I think it says a lot about the city and the Heart of Brevard, that we were able to reinvest in downtown through some really traumatic years with COVID, and then into the hurricane and other events that have, you know, frankly, other places have completely shut down at times and had a really hard time recovering. So we have been able to navigate that extremely well, and I think the Heart of Brevard organization is a massive reason for that, so I want to thank them for their work over the years. When I think back, you know, the events, I think for a long time, people just thought of events when they thought about the Heart of Brevard or when they heard that, and I don't think, yeah, I think we've gone a long way in improving that perception, and I think so much of the other work is incredibly important. And, you know, the Transylvania Tomorrow Initiative is another piece of that that I think is, you know, flies under the radar a little bit for some people, but the amount of money that was able to be raised and helped people get back on their feet through some really difficult times is really amazing. So thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I'd like to thank the Heart of Brevard as well. One of the most critical partner that we have, I think, that helps make this city what it is in ways that we, as a city and our staff, are not as well-prepared to do, to say. So I do appreciate that, and thank you so much, and thanks for your report, very succinct and well-stated.
Mr. Moore?
Impressive numbers, excellent report, and thank you for what you do to champion not only downtown, but create that sense of place and drive our local economy and bring the community together. So I appreciate those as your strategic goals. Thank you.
Ms. Holder?
I too want to say thank you. I see the hard work that goes into it during our committee meetings, and then to see it come to fruition on paper, it really makes a difference. Thank you.
Mr. Wise?
Thanks for the excellent report. I was really encouraged, 11 new businesses, 38 new jobs, that's great, that's great to hear. I agree, I think the Heart of Brevard does fill a critical need in our community that we cannot take care of ourselves, and it's not necessarily our role to take care of. So I want to appreciate your work, Heart of Brevard work, everyone who's involved with it, hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Bentley. All right, we're going to move on to our next special presentation, which is also a Heart of Brevard presentation of our Downtown Walkability Assessment, and I believe we've got Anna Davis and Maggie DeLapp, both members of the Heart of Brevard team, who are going to be presenting the results of that assessment.
All right. Hi, everyone, I'm Anna Davis, Heart of Brevard board member and chairperson for the Built Environment Committee. Also, I work at Platt here in downtown Brevard, and really excited to be a part of this. This is Maggie DeLapp, she is also a Built Environment Committee person, and we just want to say, start this with a thank you to City Council and Madam Mayor and also Public Works. This document that we've created is a very collaborative thing, and it takes hard work from everybody to get to where we are, and so we just want to say thank you. I'm going to hand it over to Maggie to talk about her study, and then you'll hear from me again at the end.
Yeah, thanks, Anna. So we're here today presenting the 2025 Walkability Study. Anna and I were here last year presenting the 2024 study. So you'll see some things that you recognize, and we want to highlight some of the successes and some of the things that have changed. So again, we looked at kind of the same things this year. We evaluated for the same conditions, including accessibility, safety, walkability, and vibrancy across the area. And Anna's going to repeat this again, but I just want to point this out, because I think this is a huge success, that of our list last year, 46 items that were identified were completed and crossed off of the book by Public Works. So that is really awesome, and we're super excited about that, and I think you'll see how we're going to take it even further for 2025. So just a little recap again, this is coming from the Heart of Brevard Built Environment Committee. All the council members were able to participate with the various groups. We studied areas extending just outside of the Heart of Brevard area to capture like entrances and exits of our downtown. And each group was assigned a color, that's the corresponding map, and then each group reported on their findings. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to walk a different route this year. That was intentional, just for fresh eyes and keep it interesting and expand everyone's Here's the updated form from this year, it's very similar to last year's. One thing that was added at the request of Public Works is that we did add a geo-locating tag on each, so it's a little bit easier to find very zoomed-in picture that we present. So a quick recap of the findings here, there were a total of 236 items in this year's book. Of that 236, the teams identified 128 as a safety issue, and then of that 128, 101 of those were further identified as a trip hazard. So this is an example of how we took this a bit further than we did last year. We sat down with Public Works and devised this way to help prioritize further than we did last year within red level one, red level two, red level three, red level four. And you'll see examples of that in the report, how, there's a few more identifying tags, and this was, again, something that we were able to develop with Public Works to further implement this plan. I have here an example of a red item. This is the broken concrete curve, so this is identified as a high priority for safety. An example of a yellow, this is one we pulled, you can see where the paint for the crosswalk is worn off, so it just doesn't alert drivers, you know, as clearly that someone might be crossing there. So again, this is also a safety issue, but this was prioritized as yellow. A lot of the green categories fall a little bit more into the look and feel of downtown. This one was identified just from a maintenance standpoint. There's a couple of things in the very foreground of the picture, the new light on Clemson Plaza is like hanging off, so that's been broken, not a great look. And then, just the back of, this is the back of the Coed Theater, and just looks like a lot of water damage and just is in need of some love. All right, Anna's going to talk about the book.
All right. I hope you all have received a copy of the book, this year's book. We worked very collaboratively this year with Public Works, as Maggie said, to create a book that is actually very usable by Public Works. We actually got really excited when we heard how Public Works took our book and printed it from last year and kept it, you know, in their office for when they had time, they took it out and pulled something out of the book to go do. And so when we heard about that, we were really excited and wanted to further figure out how to make this a usable document that can be printed and used by Public Works. So our new format follows that standard. So now, each page is an opportunity for writing, you can write notes, it has the geo-location, it identifies where it is, it ranks it and classifies it, and it actually has a little area for them to write down when the work was started and when it was completed, and we hope that we can get their copy of the book back again at the end of the year, so that way, when we do next year's Walkability Study, we can applaud them for all the hard work that they did in completing this year's findings. So our big conclusions from this year, so these are the six critical areas that we think require the most investment in our public infrastructure. The bricked paved areas along the sides of all of our streets, they have widespread deterioration, and they cause a lot of trip hazards, there's a lot of upheaval because of plants or underground action, so those present significant trip hazards. In fact, we couldn't really capture every single opportunity in these brick areas as trip hazards, because there were just so many. So these brick strips actually provide a great opportunity for some rethinking on how we walk around downtown. The other ones are concrete sidewalks. We have some gray areas that are new sidewalks, and then we have other areas where the sidewalks are very deteriorated, definitely need some maintenance. Street trees were identified as a big concern. There's empty wells, there's wells where trees are climbing out of the well, providing lots of opportunity for tripping. There's wells that are not mulched very well or over-mulched, and again, mulched areas there are pouring out onto the sidewalk and again, creating a different hazard for people. And then light poles and street standards, you know, our light poles, we've done a lot of work with DOT and Madam Mayor and others who have helped us figure out kind of the standards for our light poles and how different guide wires are created and how those things present different opportunities for both aesthetics and trip hazards in town. And then, I just want to reiterate the role of Heart of Brevard in this, you know, we provide this giant book full of, you know, safety and maintenance and issues for Public Works and Council to provide, you know, budget for and provide work orders for Public Works to complete, but we also have a role in this. We identified quite a few private sector, private businesses that also could use updating, whether or not it's their mulched areas that are encroaching on the sidewalk or their facade needs some updating. So we see that as our role to reach out to the private sector and make sure that they are aware of our grant opportunities and are aware of us as an opportunity to help figure out how to get some of that work done. And then, yeah, the general cleanliness and building maintenance, I mean, that's, again, a part of our vibrancy grant and some of the work that we do as champions of downtown Brevard. And then, we hope that you'll consider this report, as always, as a tool for Public Works and for budget funding. I mean, I feel like they did a great job of utilizing the funds that you guys allowed for them last year, and we hope that you'll consider doing that again, so we can keep going and keep maintaining downtown Brevard. Do you have any questions?
All right, counsel, Mr. Wise, any questions?
I just want to thank you and our Public Works Department for all the work you did last year, and the important, how important this report is, because without that report last year, or in previous years, it would have been very hard for us to allocate specific funds to target those areas, and so this is a fantastic tool that allows us to prioritize some of those conditions. So thanks for all that, and that's all I've got.
Ms. Holder?
Thank you. After looking at just my little area last year and this year, how do you get through the concerns and the prioritizing? How is that, a noise monitor, you put it in the book, does it also get a digital filing?
It does, yes. Everything has, we maintain a very large digital file, and we'll go through and check things off as we get them, and, you know, the priority rankings, it was a very collaborative effort between Heart of Brevard and Public Works, and, you know, it's really hard to rank things, it really is, and, I mean, if I had it my way, I would rank all of them as super important, and we would do every single thing on the list.
Yeah.
But we just can't do that, and so we really tried to prioritize safety and walkability, and those items kind of come through first.
So in general, we get to the safety issues?
Yep, the safety issues are the bulk of the priorities.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you so much for everything.
Mr. Moore?
Sounds like the book is just as important as the work.
For sure.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I think last year, I was kind of fussing about how we're seeing the same thing we saw all the years before, and although that's true this year, I realize that what's important is, is we're looking at this every year. We're not giving up, it's a process, and that there's progress being made, work is being done, and I commend everyone that took part in this, and thank you for the work of assembling all this. Again, a monumental task that we have seen performed, but again, I'm encouraged that we're making progress and not giving up.
And we crossed 46 of them off last year's list.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, again, I want to thank the Heart of Brevard and Public Works for all their work on this, and I'll, I guess, I've got a theme brewing, because I'll go pick And I'll, I guess I've got a theme brewing because I'll go pick on Mills River again. The reason this is so important and, and so difficult is that, you know, downtown is a people-centered public place, like Nicole said, and it, there are competing priorities down there. So there are, you know, people have to arrive by foot, but they're also arriving by, by car. We've got a vibrant, you know, private sector there, but there's a lot of public spaces, and we've got two major NC DOT roads that cross through downtown as well. We've got all of our utilities partners that maintain seemingly thousands of telephone poles. So there's a lot of things going on down there, and it's a lot easier for a place like, I don't know, Mills River, to cede the, the highway to NC DOT, and then they've got a private business with a massive parking lot that they maintain, and then they're done. And the reason we have so many maintenance issues here is not just because we're, you know, just ignoring them, it's just because it's, there's a lot that we're going to constantly have to do. So I hate, I hate to say it, but we're, we're never going to be done with this. That's the reason why we do it every year, because we have to keep working on it and because it is hard. But there, the reason, you know, the, the payoff is that we get to live in a place with a beautiful downtown like Brevard and not Mills River. So I'll, I'll take it easy on Mills River now, I guess, but, but thank you for everything.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Harder Brevard. Great presentation. All right, we are moving on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing on the amendment to the city of Brevard traffic schedule to establish regulations for Victory Lane. And Aaron Bland, our Assistant Planning Director, is going to walk us through this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city has recently accepted the dedication of a new road off of Osborne Road, serving a new subdivision called Victory Lane. Now that it is a city street, we have to codify appropriate, appropriate traffic regulations. So the amendments to the traffic schedule that are proposed will establish three things for the street. One, a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. Two, no parking on either side of the street for its entire length. And three, that you must stop before entering Osborne Road. So this staff report is being presented for public hearing purposes, as is your tradition. No action is requested. However, should you wish to take action at this time, you do have an enacting ordinance included in your packet. That's all I have.
All right, at this time, we will officially open the public hearing. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is open. No one signed up to speak at the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Council, do you wish to take action on the enacting ordinance tonight or wait till next meeting?
I move we take action tonight.
Are you making a motion to approve?
I am.
Second.
Okay. We will open it for discussion. Mr. Daniel?
First of all, it's not often I get to address one of my pet peeves from sitting up here, and that's when you use the English language improperly. You don't get, you don't get to make stuff up. So, but that's a pet peeve of mine. So otherwise, sounds like something that we need to do. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
I, I address my pet peeves all the time up here. As evidenced by my comments.
Could you get a second?
Yes.
I didn't hear the second. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we had a second.
But I don't have any further comments.
Oh, okay. Mr. Morrow?
No comments.
No comment. Thank you.
Mr. Wise?
I agree with the Victor E., but no comments.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We didn't pick the name, just.
All right. Moving on to our consent and information agenda, the following items are on the consent agenda. One, property tax releases March of 2025. Two, proclamation number 2025 TACO 7 Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. Three, proclamation number 2025 TACO 8, month of the Young Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2025. Four, resolution fixing a date of a public hearing for non-contiguous annexation John Valenti and MTS Properties LLC, Reservoir Road and Hampton Road. Five, designation of Mayor Kopeloff as voting delegate for the 2025-2026 North Carolina League of Municipalities Board of Directors. Six, budget amendment, police, $22,700 Governor's Crime Commission Grant. Seven, countywide single fire district proposal. Eight, council downtown master plan committee minutes, February 12th, 2025. Nine, council public works and utilities committee minutes, March 5th, 2025. And 10, correspondence, ABC board minutes, March 6th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right, I think at this point, before we start on our new business, we will take a five-minute break.[1001.04]
Yes ma'am, it's your custom to approve meeting minutes and eventually you will see the official minutes for the priority setting retreat. But in the meantime, so that staff can work on the budget confident that we are following you all's direction, I ask that you reaffirm the themes and the direction that you gave to us during the priority setting retreat as expressed in the notes document that was created by our facilitators and is attached to your agenda, so that we know we're following the right path. And I need for you to do it tonight, so that the information that staff is putting together for your budget workshop this Friday is correct, but also because there are some non-budgetary sort of directions on there, some things you want us to do in the year to come, and I just want to make sure that those get reaffirmed by you before we embark on those non-budgetary activities as well. So I'm hoping that if there are any changes, we can have a discussion about those, but if not, someone can just make a motion reaffirming the findings of, or reaffirming the priorities as established during the retreat.
Do I have a motion to reaffirm the priorities as presented?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow.
It looks as I remember it, priorities, something that is suggested on page nine, seven, eight.
Did you have a comment on page seven and eight?
Well, that's the priority list.
Yeah, oh, okay, I mean, you're just, okay, referencing it. All right. Ms. Holder?
I just want to say thank you. I had a depth, you know, to attend that day, and unfortunately missed it, but I see the work that went into it, and thank you.
Mr. Wise?
Yeah, yeah, I think this list is accurate. I want to maybe underline something Gary had mentioned in the retreat about remembering, I'm not exactly how to say it, our kind of larger scope issues that aren't specifically like Jordan Street bump out or X, Y, and Z, more about the broader intent of our moves in the next couple of years. Probably the most significant of which is an eye on housing, which is certainly detailed in some places here, but I don't want that to get lost in the minutia of specific priorities.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, that was my comment as well. I feel like this report that you gave captures the mood of the council and the intent of, you know, how our thinking was going. But the point is being made, and I would like to reinforce it, that we, what's not in here are the givens that were put up on the board, which were housing, the Estito Trail and the downtown master plan, as the things that weren't really filling out this list that are priorities for this council, as well as a waste treatment plan, of course. I mean, but I think the waste treatment plan is pretty well covered in this report. Those other three are hit, glancing blows, let's say, they're not really nailed down as these are the priorities that this council has historically set for our goals, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I just have a few, I don't think they substantively change the motion, but under the, in the priorities list, under the sports complex site planning, which did rate, you know, it scored relatively high on the priorities, it says, in the notes, it says link with funding for Estito, I think that was supposed to say Acusta.
Okay.
And then, under the stay the course section, on the additional traffic calming measures, I think we talked about this, and it doesn't really seem to be reflected in here, it's just the need to review the process for how we conduct traffic calming. And I know you've talked that, you've talked about that before, but, and finally, I just had a question on the part that was removed, which is the West Main bicycle lanes. I think Harbor of Art is still working on that, so I know it's removed from this priority, but I don't think it should be removed altogether from, we're just waiting on a few more things to happen, right?
Correct. We presume that we won't have ownership of the street in the coming fiscal year, or if we do, it'll be so late in the year, we'll need to wait till the next fiscal year to budget for anything.
Okay. And if something would change with that, I'm sure you would come to us, yeah. Okay, those were, those were the only questions I had.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, moving on, for our next item of unfinished business is the Azalea Avenue property LMI housing presentation and property acquisition discussion. And I believe we've got, DFI is here to present. Wilson, are you going to open this, or?
Yes, ma'am. So there's actually sort of two related pieces that we need to discuss tonight, and Sarah Van Leeuwen from DFI, who even though she is paid for by a separate agency, we have been working with her so closely that she's kind of like one of us, so I'm going to call her our cousin Sarah Van Leeuwen, kind of like our cousin Nicole, who was here earlier. She's going to take you through the results of the second round of public engagement on LMI possibilities for the Azalea Avenue site, including some preliminary financial pro formas that they've done for a couple of development scenarios for that site. And then, once she's done, and with the information that she's shared with us, we need to have an introductory conversation on the possibility of fulfilling our, excuse me, following through on the purchase of the site, which has some, as you can imagine, significant financial implications. And so I want to tell you a little bit about how that would work and what some of those implications would be, and then hear from you all about your tolerance for that, and whether you want to move forward with it. So first, I'll throw it to cousin Sarah for her presentation on the development scenarios.
Thank you so much, and thanks for having me. For those of you in the room who I don't know, my name is Sarah Van Leeuwen, and I'm a project manager with the Development Finance Initiative. We're a group out of UNC School of Government that partner with cities like Brevard all across the state of North Carolina to help them understand and figure out transformative real estate opportunities that are going to meet targeted public interests and community goals. So we have had the pleasure of working with the city of Brevard for the last couple of years to think through affordable housing development opportunities here in the city. We are, I am here today, I'm used to saying we, but it's just me here today, to talk about our feasibility findings for the Azalea Avenue site. So our objectives are, one, to review our development options for this site, and to incorporate community engagement feedback that we got on these development options. I want to just note here for the public and for council, similar to our previous community engagement efforts this past December, this past March was our second phase of community engagement, and similar to last time, there's a much more detailed engagement memo that walks through in more detail the feedback that we received. So if you have thoughts or questions that relate to that, that is available to the public. Today, I'm going to go through the high-level feedback, but certainly happy to dig in with anyone anytime on that deeper level feedback. With that information reviewed, our goal today is to hear from council on selecting a preferred development option, and that's to enable our next step together, which is to begin to find a qualified development partner and begin a public competitive process, solicitation process, to find a development partner for the Azalea Avenue site. I want to just caveat for a moment, when I say preferred development option, the idea is that we have what, through our site and financial feasibility analyses, and based on our engagement efforts with the city and with the community here, we have what we deem as feasible options. And we'll walk through those details and through those numbers. That's an important part of then going out and communicating to the developer community what we think is possible, what we've heard from you all is possible. That is not the final end-all, be-all program for this site, but instead is communicating the preferences for the development on this site, which through negotiation with a qualified development partner, we'll get down to the nitty-gritty of exactly what that looks like. But the effort today is to begin to get those transparent kind of public signals as we begin potentially a developer solicitation process, if that makes sense. So I'm going to walk through our two main development options, which were the heart of our discussion with the public during our last round of community engagement. So development option one, while I'll dig into each two, as you can see, is multiple buildings, six in total, that totals 48 units. So I'll dig into each one of these in more details. This development option one is more specifically two, three-story buildings. You can see here the proportion, the kind of estimated proportion of one-bedroom up to three-bedroom units, approximately 87 parking spaces, and a total estimated development costs of just north of $17 million. One of the things that I want to point out that is true for both development options is, you can see a pump station that is planned for, and that relates to the future sewer extension that would need to happen in this neighborhood in order to enable this project. So we have planned for, as important part of thinking about the site design, planned for carving out a section for that future pump station that would support not only this site, but many other parcels in the neighborhood. We also, you know, heard in our first round of community engagement, the importance of outdoor green space amenities. There's an unnamed stream that flows through the northern part of this parcel, which creates a really perfect and ideal area to have a green space amenity on the northernmost side. You can see other green buffers and other green areas, wouldn't be the only amenity space, but this is the primary area for a green amenity space that exists in both development options that we'll talk about today. Here is a high-level 3D rendering of what that development option, number one, would look like in relationship to the rest of the buildings in the immediate vicinity. And then here's a funding overview, so to give you all a sense of the capital stack that would be needed in order to reach that $17.2 million in estimated development costs. In both of these scenarios, low-income housing tax credit equity is the primary source of equity for this future development. A qualified development partner would also need to get a primary loan of approximately $3.6 million. And then there's a secondary loan called an RPP loan that is associated directly to receiving those Lytec equity credits. So it's a lower interest, below-market-rate loan that is accessible through, through that Lytec equity process. We've also accounted for a deferred developer fee of approximately $300,000, which is the standard practice in affordable housing development, which leaves an estimated funding gap for council's consideration of approximately $800,000 to get to this full $17.2 million. Development option two is, as you can see, kind of a varied density design that ranges from one story up to three stories. There's one three-story building right in the center of the parcel, there's two, sorry, there's three two-story buildings on the outer edges of the parcel, and then one, one-story, sorry, two one-story buildings, too many numbers there, one of which includes the anticipated indoor amenity space, obviously alongside that green space amenity that we talked about before. So again, a total of 48 units, 76 parking spaces, and an estimated total development cost of $16.5 million. This is a 3D overview of what that could look like in relationship to the surrounding buildings, and very similar in terms of overall capital stacks. So you'll see that Lytec equity number is the same at $11.3 million. We've maxed out the Lytec equity on this project in both of those scenarios. The primary loan is a little smaller at $3.2 million, and an RPP loan at a million, similar-sized development, deferred development fee, which brings the estimated funding gap for the city to consider at $700,000. And one of the things with that overview of those two development options, we're going to talk about a third, a 2.1 here in a minute, but before I get there, I want to talk about the community engagement that we did, which really centered around the Azalea Avenue site public interests that were established as a part of our first community engagement effort. So as a reminder, these are the public interests that really informed our design work with Row House Architects, our architecture partner that helped us think through that site analysis, really informed, will continue to inform a solicitation process, a negotiation process with a future development partner. These public interests really form the key aspects of discussions, negotiations, trade-offs as we think about what this site will be in the future, and kind of how we get there with a future partner. So there are four in total, as you can see here. Number one is to optimize the number of new quality rental units affordable to Brevard's low-to-moderate-income households in the local workforce. Two is to include green space and community amenities for residents. Three is to attract as much private investment as possible, so we can maximize the impact of the public investment being made in affordable housing. And then four, to accommodate the city's sewer infrastructure extension into the Azalea Rhododendron neighborhood. So in this second round, we did, we had a similar number of opportunities to engage as we did in the first round, which included an online survey that was open for two weeks. We received 29 responses. We held two in-person sessions at the Calvary Baptist Church. We had nine total in-person participants. And then we also hosted a virtual session via Zoom the following day, and we had two participants in that session. So I'll just walk through. Number one kind of finding is that participants in, through the survey, through the in-person and online, confirmed that both development options one and two do meet the guiding public interests established for this site. A majority of participants preferred development option two based on overall look and feel. So folks who shared this sentiment really appreciated the minimal difference in overall unit count alongside a design that, quote, "looks more like a community." For many, it felt like it fit better in Brevard, but also in this neighborhood. The participants who preferred development option one noted how this design really allows for the greatest number of new units, and noted the effective use of the site. Folks who really shared this sentiment talked about the growing housing needs in Brevard, and their concern about that, the limited land options to meet those needs here in the city, and the lower cost per unit for this option, so some economic benefits there. Participants really appreciated the green space, and the significant amount of green space in these site designs, but I'll just note that they all agreed that the space needed to be programmed. So if this was just kind of trees and just un, you know, kind of unmanaged space, that that wasn't really meeting the goals that participants saw for that space. So a programmed space that was well-maintained encouraged regular use and resident interactions. So some of the details around that included like picnic tables and walking trails and good lighting and a playground, and things that really encouraged that use. As always, we ask for additional comments and concerns and questions, and similar to our first phase of engagement, traffic, concerns about traffic on Azalea Avenue and the overall road capacity there, but also the level of current traffic that is, that exists on Old Hendersonville Highway. This traffic concern related also to bike and pedestrian safety, so worries and challenges around that, and also concerns about stormwater management. So these were the big themes that came out of that additional comment section. With that, I'm going to transition to talk about what's actually a third option for you all to consider. We heard from the community that development option two was preferred kind of for that overall look and feel. We also heard from council and from staff in conversations that we've had with you that there's a desire to try and not remove the single-family house that exists on Old Hendersonville Highway. So with all of the feedback that we've received publicly and from council, Mr. Daniel, I'll give you a special shout-out for some of your specific ideas and questions in our conversations that present us with what we're calling development option 2.1. It's very similar, as you can see, to development option two, but we've, in partnership with Row House, explored how to remove the one-story building that was anticipated on the parcel that is outlined in red, where the single-family house sits, by adding a level to the back northernmost part of the building. So that becomes a three-story building instead of a two-story building. The number of units remain the same, at 48 total units. We've essentially traded two one-bedroom units for two three-bedroom units to make this work. 72 parking spaces, and a very similar, well, not similar, exact same estimated development costs, there's very little difference in the development costs for design option two versus Here's an overview of a 3D rendering of what that could look like with the surrounding buildings. And same as development option two, here's the funding stack overview of the Lytec equity, again at $11.3 million, anticipated $3.2 million primary loan, million-dollar RPP loan, and a deferred developer fee of $300,000, leaving the city to consider a $700,000 estimated funding gap. So as I mentioned before, what we're here to do today is to talk with you about and select a preferred development option. That enables us to continue forward in this summer in putting together a solicitation package and partnering with you to facilitate a competitive solicitation process, and hopefully find a qualified, select, find and select a qualified development partner this fall, winter. These are kind of most upcoming steps, but I wanted to center that in a broader timeline. So what we have been doing up until this point is a pre-development assessment to understand really the core possibilities, challenges, risks, and opportunities that exist on this site. What we would do next is solicit qualified development partners in order to then negotiate a targeted development agreement with a selected partner. That typically takes 12 to 18 months. That development partner would then apply for those low-income housing tax credits, which maybe they would get on the first try, but oftentimes takes multiple tries to get those credits. Once they have those credits, they can close on their fuller funding, financial closing, and then be able to proceed with construction. One of the things I'll just note that simultaneously needs to happen in order to be able to apply for those Lytec credits is the sewer engineering and construction for that sewer extension in the Azalea Rhododendron neighborhood. So with that, I'll pause here on a summary slide that outlines those three primary options, and pause for additional context, either from Wilson or others, and questions from you all.
Wilson, do you want to present anything else before we open up for questions for council?
Well, the last slide showing the schedule was important, because whether you select option two or option 2.1, the presence of the house is an important factor in whether or not we can afford to do this. And so the fact that we realistically can't expect to see any construction for four to five years is actually a good thing, because we need the house to exist that long, because its presence is one of the things that we think, the loan that we borrow the money from... the loan that we borrow the money from will require. And the reason why is because the property's appraised value includes a single-family home. And so if a bank loans us money contingent on that value, that home needs to be there as collateral. And a loan will need to get because after we made a loan to Fairhaven Meadows a few months ago for low to moderate income housing, we are now what I like to call house poor. We don't have a lot of cash lying around. And so the only way we can make this happen is to finance it. Dean is working now on a RFQ for financial institutions to submit proposals for interest rate terms and so forth. This is a best practice that's recommended by the LGC, and so we're going to do it. And if you tell us to move forward tonight, we'll probably publish that here later this week or early next and start collecting those proposals. And the length of the term, or the length of the loan will need to be five years or less. And of course, that has consequences for the amount of debt service that we'll be faced with for the next handful of years. And the reason why it needs to be five years or less is because anything longer than five years requires LGC approval. And I don't think we've got time to get that from them before the purchased, option purchase required expires. And so I think we need to do the loan that doesn't require their approval, even if it means we pay a little bit more out of pocket over the next five years. And so the loan amount would be about $925,000. The purchase price that we've negotiated with the owners is 1.1 million. We will have paid about $175,000 towards that purchase price over the eight month, eight months of the option that we're currently in right now. And so the balance is $925,000. We estimate that with the going rates, the debt service for that will be between $230,000 and $250,000 per year for the next five years, which is a manageable number. But it is about all that we have been endowing the Housing Trust Fund with for the last few years. And so at our current rate of contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, this would be our housing program. Unless you all chose to invest more in the Housing Trust Fund. And so it's serendipitous that this question is coming up right before our budget workshop so that you consider, you can consider them alongside one another. And so our amount that you wish to contribute to the Housing Trust Fund will be one of the main topics on our agenda this Friday. But I can tell you now that, you know, the budget's looking tight. And so in order to invest any more in Housing Trust Fund than we've done over the past few years, there'll be some trade-offs that need to be made. And so I'm so glad that we're having that trade-off conversation here at the same time as this question is before us. So the, I guess the main points of my comments are the house needs to stay for at least five years. Even if we're able to keep the house and sell it on the open market and refund ourselves, that's still several years away. And so the council needs to be prepared to front the entire purchase price here in the next few weeks if we decide to move forward with this. And the debt service is about the same, actually a little bit more than what we've been contributing to the Housing Trust Fund here over the last few years. And so I offer those facts as context as you all consider whether to move forward with this possibility.
All right, at this point, we will, we will open it for discussion. And we'll start with Mr. Morrow.
Do you need a motion, do you not? I would, I don't mind making a motion that we mo for.
All right, well, you have a preferred option.
Let's go with two A, two one.
Two, all right.
Seems like one that, which doesn't include the house, so.
So we've got, you're making a motion.
Motion to approve.
Option 2.1.
Two one and buy the house.
Second.
Okay, all right, now we'll start the discussion. All right, over to you.
I, I mean, this, I, I think the more we think about this particular site, the more it actually fits. I like the fact that it fits in the terrain with adjoining property. A higher mitigates the three-story building concerns. It, it's in a location that is, you can literally walk anywhere. Eventually, we will have to have sidewalks and the infrastructure that's talked about and the upgrade of 64 is, all has to be done anyway. This might even drive that quicker than it might if we didn't do it. So I think we, we're going in it, into this with our eyes open, understanding that, that this doughnut hole, this is the, this is the key to open up the doughnut hole that we've been struggling with for, for, forever. And so it gives an opportunity to provide the infrastructure now and, or sooner rather than later and get that ball moving. And I, and I just want to thank you all for, you all being able to put this together in a package that I think that the community understands better.
Ms. Holder?
You know which one is my option.
I know.
But I understand Wilson's point. Option two is still my option, but I certainly understand the need to keep that house there. Would that, how would that, or would it affect the value after we have built these residences? Would it affect the value of the house one way or the other?
Possibly. I don't know. We'd, we'd have to get it reappraised when we got ready to sell it. It's possible that having a driveway, you know, 15 feet from the side of the house might affect its market value somewhat. I don't think the presence of the multifamily housing will impact the value, just the driveway, and so it could, but I don't know that for sure.
And so, and I'm brainstorming, so. In five years, I think I heard you say, if we decided to sell the house, is there a possibility to do a phase two and maybe put more housing there?
Do, do you mean where the single-family house is?
Correct.
You know, I, I think that what you're likely going to do with any future development partner is negotiate an agreed-upon program, right, through the process of that development agreement. You're going to get really specific and, and we're, we have a 10-year contract with you. So we're here, we're here with you to help think through that agreement negotiation in, in detail. But at the end of the day, that developer is then going to go and apply for Lytec credits. The, there are changes that happen every year that, that make real differences in what the end result of the development is tied to those credits. So I'm not really able to, to answer that. I mean, you, you'll have plenty of, you and the public will have plenty of runway to know what's going to happen with your future partner because they will be a partner with you that you'll have a formal agreement in place with. But it's hard to answer that question, given the number of unknowns at this stage.
I think it's possible, Councilmember Holder, that if we choose to move forward with development option 2.1, under the assumption that we need to preserve the house, which is the whole impetus behind the creation of that option, and five years from now, we go to sell the house, we'd have to assess whether it has more value as a single-family home or as a property for multifamily. It might have more value as the landing place for a duplex or a triplex or a quadriplex or even another apartment building. And so that's a, something we'd have to assess at that time.
I'll just note too that this is, this is a challenging site. So it's, this is a challenging site.
Okay.
And so I, I think that 58 units is, is likely the maximum.
Right.
There are a lot of people out there with a lot of ideas, and five years from now, there might be new ways to think about this site that we don't know of yet that could maybe offer an opportunity for more units. But from what we know today, 58 is, is really creating a pretty firm ceiling based on what we understand of the site at this stage.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Wise?
Thanks for this presentation. Could you remind me of the funding gap for 2.1A5?
2.1.
It was 700.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go to this slide, which is going to break down. So the funding gap is approximately $700,000. But when, when we think about the full investment that you're considering, we're also thinking about the, the land conveyance, which we have incorporated into our financial analysis of being conveyed at a nominal rate. So that financial gap is kind of paired with that land acquisition cost here to show a $1.8 million potential public investment for development option 2.1.
No, I'm also in favor of 2.1. I think that's what we're calling it. Initially, I was really trying, I was struggling between just, let's just maximize it because the differential in unit cost is pretty significant for losing 10 units. But I think, I do, I really like the idea of saving the house for a lot of reasons. The, the house is there, so. Otherwise, I just say thankfully, we have a very stable federal government and there's no surprises likely coming over the next couple of years so we can feel very comfortable in a, in a loan, so. That is it for my comments. I don't know.
Well, originally, when we started talking about this piece of property, you know, the house, being able to, you know, capitalize on the house was an exciting aspect of that to make us be able to afford this. So option 2.1, keeping the house. One of the things that in our meeting Emily mentioned, you know, would be possible to move the house, and I didn't think of this until later, is that, you know, if we're going to move it, we should move it to a, a piece of property that we own. And we could sell the house and that piece of property, probably be more valuable than it would be where it's sitting. That's just, again, as Palma says, I'm thinking out loud here. But I, I just, you know, I liked 2.1. It saves the house, it saves, you know, it helps us capitalize on the house. And also, it seems more of a, have a neighborhood aspect to it than option one. Those are my thoughts.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah. Thank you for, for all your hard work on this. I know there's a lot behind the scenes. My, I get, I think my question is first for Wilson. Is there, I mean, and I'm asking this not because I prefer it. I just was unclear from what you said. Is there any financial option to do option one? It sounds like we, there is not really. The, the house has to remain in order for us to.
No, the house does not have to remain. It's just more of a financial liability on us if we choose an option that requires the house to be torn down.
But our ability to get a loan in order to pay for the, the land itself, according to you, you said, depends on the house remaining, correct?
Until the loan's paid off, yes, sir. And so we would have to pay off the loan before we could remove the house. And so that's why the five years or so that we think it's going to take to get shovels in the ground actually aligns pretty nicely with the length of the term and the requirement that we'll have to keep the house standing for at least that long.
Okay.
And that way, if, you know, we miss a payment and they, the bank forecloses on our loan, which of course won't happen, but if that happened, they would have a asset on the property that they could use to recover their loan.
If I can add on to that briefly, that timeline is, is important not only for the loan, but also for the development agreement. Well, for the selection of a development partner, the negotiation with a future partner, and all, and all of the next steps that are ahead in that process. So being able to not need to decide on that right now is, is to your benefit.
Right.
Because we have a lot of questions we'll be answering along the way through each of those next steps.
Right. And, I mean, once, if we keep, you know, if we get a loan, purchase the property and the house, I mean, the, the house then becomes an asset for us. I, I know we've talked about the potential of selling that house at, at some point, which could then be used to pay off the loan, correct?
Correct. If, if option 2.1 is the one that the developer likes and we can make the numbers pencil out on that one, then we would sell the house and use the proceeds to limit our financial liability. But if we have to tear down the house to make the project work, we can do that after five years. And in the meantime, we can rent the house and make some of our revenue back with the rental proceeds from the house for the next five years.
Okay. I think that clears it up for me. And I, I want to repeat something that Councilman Morrow said, which is that, you know, this project is more than just the, the potential of adding affordable units to the city of Brevard. It really becomes sort of like a, the signature development for, you know, the anchor of reinvestment for this particular part of town, which includes multiple properties with failing septic systems, which I think if they are forced into fixing, that's going to be incredibly disruptive to those property owners over the next few years. And in some cases, might even not be possible to replace. So that, that means we're losing units. If, if, so the reason I, I point that out is because I know we've had some very early discussions with the county on their ability to, to help out with the infrastructure side of this. I've had some conversations with individual commissioners and it sounds like, you know, they are at least interested in, in what we have going on here and are aware that there are county residents in this area right now who are, who could be in some trouble here over the next few years. So to me, this is, it's just an opportunity to, to, you know, improve our relationship with the county, partner with other organizations locally and do good, not just on this site and for the city of Brevard, but also for the existing homeowners that are surrounding this.
Yes, sir. And we've submitted two infrastructure possibilities to them that they are going to include on their capital improvement planning agenda here in the weeks to come. The first option would be to just build the, what's it called, Paul? The trunk line, so from Old Hendersonville Highway. Main Spine, excuse me. From Old Hendersonville Highway up to the pump station at the top of the property. That would serve our property and then the ones adjacent to it. And then the second possibility is extending it all through the neighborhood. And that would make it accessible to the other homes there. And so we'll see which one, if any, they're interested in helping us with. If neither, we plan on applying for CDBG in the fall. And we've already got Land of Sky geared up to help us with that application. Those were the projects that we were hoping to fund with the Pro Housing Grant that we did not receive. And just as a reminder for our visitors and the folks in the audience, last year, the council passed an amendment to their ordinance, which gave houses with failing septic systems, like the ones in this neighborhood, the ability to tap on to city utilities without annexation in return for a commitment to keeping the house affordable. And so we haven't worked out exactly what vehicle we will require of any house that takes us up on that offer. But presumably, by the time the infrastructure is installed and we might have some interested new customers who want city water but don't want to annex, we'll have a program for them to participate in that would help preserve those affordable units, Mr. Baker, that you pointed out exist in that neighborhood.
Those are all my questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Okay, motion passes, option two point one. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to our next item. I think you've got everything you needed on this one, right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, ma'am. And I will come back to you probably on the twenty first with a request that you formally approve the purchase and the loan for the property.
All right, moving on to our next item is the proposed amendment to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter nineteen, definitions in response to session law twenty twenty four, Tac fifty seven. And we've got Mr. Bland again presenting.
Yes, so this is the vote follow-up to a matter you held a public hearing about on March seventeenth. And just as a reminder, they are text amendments in response to changes of state law that restrict our local government discretion to amend our zoning ordinances, specifically broadening the definition of downzoning and providing that we cannot adopt any such downzoning without written consent from all impacted property owners. So the text amendment tries to provide us some context within the bounds of this new law in which we can apply our new architectural standards by adding two definitions to the UDO, one for new construction and another for residential zoning district. During the public hearing, there was a discussion about the importance of ensuring clarity between the new, new construction definition and the existing definition of significant improvement, which is a threshold of investment in a property that comes into play for nonconformities. So just to be clear, adding a definition of new construction does not change anything in the nonconformities chapter, including the process by which nonconformities are addressed during permitting. It is just a, a different level of investment. So we would end up with three levels of investment within the UDO. One is significant improvements, which is twenty-five percent investment of the value of the structure. One would be substantial, which is fifty percent. And then new construction, as recommended, would be seventy-five percent. So I also want to note that an overhaul of Chapter fourteen, which is that nonconformities chapter, is sort of next on our, our list of things we want to improve in the UDO. So all three of these triggers would be sort of the basis for which we would tackle that next, next text amendment. So again, before you, you have the, the new construction definition, also the residential zoning district definition, which is before you tonight. And that's all I have.
All right, do I have a motion concerning the amendment? Do I have an emotion to adopt the amendment as written?
So moved.
Second.
We'll open discussion. Mr. Wise?
This is actually for our attorney. Has there any, have you heard of any movement in our House with the, what's the, the opposition bill or?
There, there's probably been a half dozen.
Yeah.
Bills submitted. Some of them are local. But there have been at least two, I think one on each side, one in the Senate, one in the House, for rolling back this session law. But there, there's no telling where it is. There's also one that is out there that's been put in for getting rid of ETJ completely from any community in a county of less than fifty thousand people. So there's no real way of telling where this is gonna go or how. So I think this is probably a wise choice to assume that things are gonna stay the way they are, act accordingly, and then if we need to modify it later, we modify it later.
I will add, having these two definitions just generally is gonna be helpful.
That's all, that's all I have.
Ms. Holder?
I, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow?
If Aaron says it's good, I'm good.
Mr. Baker?
Could I, could I just ask a clarifying question on what the, the motion is in regards to the options before us? So the, I guess the staff recommend, staff recommended definition of residential zoning district? And the seventy-five percent for the new construction? Is that correct?
It wasn't my motion.
Yes, that's what I was assuming.
Okay, okay. Can I ask why, I know that it's, the planning board recommended the, a different definition for residential zoning district. Can I ask why staff prefers the, the option two?
I think it's a little more defensible. There's sort of a spectrum here of how, how loosely we could interpret that or define that. And planning board wanted to kind of go a little all in. We think it's a little more prudent to be a little, little more targeted just because if, if we got questioned on this, it'd be more defensible. And that's a conclusion we reached working with Mr. McKeller.
And I guess I, I personally prefer a lower threshold for the new construction percentage. I, I think we've seen, you know, that seventy-five percent or, or just up to seventy-five percent is a, could be a very big change for, for a building. So for some of these things to kick in and require, you know, the, the changes that we, you know, that lay out the vision for Brevard, I think sixty-six percent seems more reasonable to me. I did want to, and I know I'm bouncing around a little bit, so I apologize. But one thing that struck me on, for the, for the new construction provision and, and other provisions for nonconformity is, do, do we have any sort of potential exemption for properties that are sort of architecturally significant?
Anything that's a, a local, has a local landmark designation would need to get a certificate of appropriateness prior to doing any work through the Joint Estoril Preservation Commission. I don't know of any specific exemption to buildings. I think that's the only sort of layer of.
Okay.
Of extra layer for those sorts of buildings that would be in place right now.
Okay. And this might not be for tonight, but I, when you said you're gonna review the, the nonconformity section, I, I do wonder if we should look into that. Because there are certain buildings. We have many buildings that I think we would be happy if they saw some redevelopment and, and moved to, to conform with the, with, with our new standards. But I think there are others which may not be, may not fit the strict definition of what our, our vision and the standards lay out, but which, if they were able to be reused in their current form, would actually be a benefit to the, to the community, so.
Yeah, we can, we can dig into that more when we open up that chapter. It was included in here for context, but we're not actually amending that chapter at this stage. But that, how intensely you tackle nonconformities is sort of a spectrum and different communities do it different ways. Some people want to be more lenient. Some people want nonconformities to come into compliance quickly. And so they're a little more intense about it. So that's where we decide to fall on that spectrum is something that we'll talk about more when we open up that whole chapter.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking of, of like certain buildings that are on, like the Bracken Mountain Builder Building that they recently redid, which.
On Caldwell?
On Caldwell, yeah. And, you know, across the street, there, there's some, there's some neat buildings that are, you know, maybe that don't, they wouldn't fit into our, the code strictly, but could, if reused, could be pretty impactful, so. I'd be interested in looking at that. So, yeah, I mean, back to the, the, the motion at hand. I think personally, I'd prefer to go with planning board's recommendation for the residential zoning district and sixty-six percent for the new construction. But I understand I am just one vote.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I questioned the seventy-five percent at the last meeting. Was thinking that the, you know, my question would be, you know, if the intent is to have a architectural standard and there's no way to, you know, seventy-five percent is a pretty high bar to achieve the, the goals that we're, I assume we're trying to meet. It, it feels like it's not very effective, that percentage. Would, am I mistaken?
It depends on the building. We have some buildings that are valued so low that a, a new coat of paint would be seventy-five percent of their value. We have some buildings that are valued much higher and so they can do a lot more. So it's sort of, it's hard to come up with a one-size-fits-all number. Again, it's sort of where do we want to fall in that spectrum of compelling compliance?
Well, I, you know.
And that, and that's a policy decision for y'all.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think, I think it should be two-thirds. Seventy-five percent is, you, you're almost talking about a new building at that. You could almost do something completely different and not have to meet our standards at seventy-five percent. So I, I'm not gonna support seventy-five percent, so.
All right, any other additional comments?
Could I make a?
Do you wish to modify your motion?
I would. I, I'm happy to modify my motion to sixty-six percent on commercial new constru, or commercial construction. Is that what you're? We did talk about that. I've been trying to, and I, I'm comfortable with that. Been trying to weigh out the burden to the property owner versus what, what we're looking for is in the city character. But I think sixty-six percent strikes a balance to me that I'm comfortable with.
So that definition has seventy-five percent in two places. I'm assuming you're changing it to sixty-six in both?
I, I think we're just talking about sixty-six on the commercial.
It's not broken out by commercial, so the, the, so it's any newly constructed building or structure, but also applies to existing buildings.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. So sixty-six to both?
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
All right, so you've modified your motion and, Mr. Morrow, who was the second?
Mr. Morrow. I'm good.
You're good, you're good. So we have.
We just need to move on.
We have a motion and a second with a modification. Is there any, any other additional discussion?
Can I just ask, Mr. Wise, if he only wanted to modify the one definition or, or both?
You have questions, man.
Since it was in response to Mr. Baker, we've talked about both. Want to get it right.
Value of existing.
Both, please.
So that'll be moving to proposed definition, option number three of residential, which is planning board's recommendation, any zoning district that permits residential land uses.
Yes, option three. Let's keep it spicy towards the end of the meeting.
Mr. Morrow, okay with that? And you're?
I'm okay, yeah.
All right, so.
Just get this thing done.
Okay. All right, I think we all have a clearly defined, new, modified motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Proposed amendment to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapters two, three, five, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen, Architectural Standards. And we've got Mr. Ray, our Planning Director.
Thank you. Tonight, we're bringing back the proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, like the mayor said, Chapters two, three, five, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen. This amendment focuses on updating the city's architectural standards. This initiative began back in December of twenty twenty-three when council approved a contract with Placerbia, a planning and urban design firm, to overhaul our architectural standards. Their work was divided into two phases. The first phase was to develop a standalone design guideline, which council endorsed in June of twenty twenty-four. Phase two was codifying those guidelines into enforceable standards within the UDO, which is what's before you tonight. These updated standards were recommended by the planning board in February and presented to city council at a public hearing in March, two weeks ago. Revised Chapter five is organized by building types and architectural styles with tailored requirements for each. There is a particular emphasis placed on character areas where building types and styles are carefully matched by the community's vision. Due to NC session law in twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven, we had to hold off on activating two previously identified character areas, Railroad Avenue and US sixty-four corridor. But we were able to keep our downtown overlay boundaries intact. That said, the standards for the two dormant character areas have been written. So if the state law changes, we are ready to move forward on them quickly. After the packets were published, we noticed a typo in building styles. Pass those out. Section five point seven point seven, live-work buildings, and five point seven point eight, neighborhood businesses, both have a minimum requirement of two stories. The language from liner buildings was accidentally transferred over. That was staff's mistake when transferring it. This amendment supports goal two of the Building Brevard twenty thirty Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which promotes livable, character-rich development. It also carries forward objectives like encouraging form-based codes downtown and improving building quality citywide. Council's options tonight are: adopt the amendments as written, revise and adopt them, reject the amendments, send them back to the planning board, or call for additional public hearings. Staff is available now to answer any questions.
All right, council, do we have a motion concerning the amendments?
I move we adopt the amendments as written.
I'll second.
All right, we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow?
I think it's, it's a great time to be here. It's a hundred pages. A hundred pages. So I'm anxious to move it on.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I think we have discussed this and reviewed it adequately, so I would agree.
Mr. Baker?
I'll just briefly summarize what my comments at the last meeting were, with that, you know, I, I do have a, I'm, I'm in support of this. It's a ton of great work. You know, I, I do think we should be mindful of the, the ongoing burden that, that this might place on our planning staff and be sure that they can help people navigate it quickly. It's, it is a hundred pages. It, it is easy to read, surprisingly. But it does represent, you know, a significant addition to our code and potential complication there. So I am interested in, in ways we can try to simplify the code over the next few years and the potential for moving to form-based code eventually. But I am supportive of this tonight, so thank you.
Ms. Holder?
I don't have any questions. I've had one, but I, I, I'm okay.
Mr. Wise?
I'm just excited to see this moving forward. And again, as I said last time, I just, I'm glad you guys do this stuff. And we don't have to, because that's a lot of work. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to new business. Approval of open-ended designer service agreements. And I believe that's our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Todd.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I believe you have before you a resolution seeking approval for designers that we have selected for open-ended service agreements. So just a little history on that. As you have realized here in recent months, I've brought a couple of designer approvals forward to you, asking for exemption from the mini brooks law. So the mini brooks law requires us anytime we hire an engineer or designer to advertise and interview for those firms. So what we have done with the open-ended design agreement is we've published an ad and published that widely spread, Asheville newspaper, Charlotte newspaper, a couple of, well, at least one hub firm, two hub firms, Greater Diversity News and North Carolina Hub Site. And we published open-ended service agreements for architectural, civil engineering and the, with a traffic focus, civil engineering with a utilities focus, environmental, roofing and building envelope design and survey. And we did. And we did receive qualification packages from several firms. We received four in architectural, six in traffic, nine in utilities, six in environmental, three in roofing, and six in survey. So we, following the receipt of these qualification packages, we did create an in-house committee of staff consisting of myself, Paul Ray, Aaron Bland, and Wesley Shook. And we went through the proposals, or the qualification packages, excuse me, in detail and shortlisted those firms into what you should have an attachment onto the resolution that highlights some of the firms that have been shortlisted or the firms that have been shortlisted. And we picked three in every discipline except for the civil utilities. We chose five. Was a pretty wide diversity of qualifications for the firms and the civil utilities. And there is a fair amount of that work that we do across the city, so we wanted to have flexibility in those firms. So we have got that proposal, or excuse me, the resolution in front of you, and I'm glad to entertain any questions.
Council, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Daniel.
I have no discussion.
Mr. Baker.
I have no comments. Thanks.
Mr. Morrow.
Moving on.
Ms. Holder.
No comments.
Mr. Wise.
Good job, no comments.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved.
Thank you.
So Mac, who are you pulling for?
All right. We are now at remarks and future agenda considerations. All right, and let's, let's start with Mr. Morrow.
I have something that a city manager asked me to bring up. A few months ago, a young lady who is interested in doing a food truck, she was displaced with Creekside, her family was. And she has a food truck order and she wants to duplicate Creekside's hot pastrami sandwich. So I was all in favor of that. So, but she came to Keer, you may not know it, but Keer has the ghost kitchen. Several businesses started there, Flewridge Bakery across the street, Indigo Catering and others. And it became available in, in January. So the owner, David Watkins, and she are, well, working out a deal. And soon as the bank that she's loaned and she gets her food truck, then she would be able to then have the ghost kitchen inspected as well as the food truck and got to have parking, you got to have all these things. And that should just fall into place. But in talking with Tyree, Tyree and she, this young lady went to school together, so they're just like, like this, you know, they're all, they're all, are all excited about this potential. And she wants to make it work, whatever the city sees is, is sort of putting her toe in the water as to how this should work. What are the ramifications of that? And that's what I think the city manager is asking council or me to bring it up. So you will know that we're working on this to authorize the staff to spend some time and develop the policy. One of the issues that she raised question about was, as you know, we put a, we have electrical hook up there. And whether she even needs it or not is yet to be determined. But because we have one, it makes sense that that be considered. So the issue is how much do you pay rent or that sort of thing, or is it simply an amenity to have in one of your parks to have a food truck? And her idea, I think, was to be there during the week, Monday through Friday in one location. And when you look around at a town, you go to the hub, they have the same velvet coffee been there for as long as I can remember. And then you go other places, the same food trucks are there for every day of the week. And so I reached out to the hub just to see what kind of arrangements they have. And I didn't get to talk to the gal who actually handles it, Sarah, but she indicated, the person on duty on Saturday said that they really don't charge anything. It's a mutual sort of benefit and some, some rules require them to carry off their own garbage, waste, et cetera, and some things like that. But no real specifics about, there was no rent involved. And I saw, I went to, because I think the question that the manager asked, and I'll let him speak to this, but was, that should maybe pay a market rate. So there was another food truck that was parked at Pisgah, the former Pisgah Fish Camp. And it's one I've noticed up to Toxway where its ghost kitchen is. Cheeks is a barbecue, big yellow thing. And he said, it's interesting. He said, he said, I like moving around. And it depends, you might go to a convenience store and simply I have to just cook a meal for the employees. Or I can't serve drinks. So it's almost on a case-by-case basis. I said, well, have you ever had to pay rent? Is there a rent? He said, well, I think about it. One time I had to pay ten dollars for a day and another time I think I paid twenty-five dollars a day. So it's not a lot, a lot of money. So to come up with that and just doing it, but anyway, so. Mr. Managers, that's sort of what you wanted me to do?
Yeah, so there's a couple of questions that we'd like council's permission to spend some time trying to answer. The first is whether the spot on the, in the depot park that they're interested in conforms with our requirements for food trucks. That's number one. Number two, whether y'all are interested in lending out our space in this way. And number three, if so, what would be a fair market rate? Whether it is just paying for the electricity they use or, you know, some type of barter or exchange, or if we want to charge the money. What those criteria for locating there would be. And so I just ask Mac to offer this possibility to you all and make sure it was something that you all are okay with us spending a little bit of time on and bringing back to you here in the future.
Anything else, Mac?
That's it.
Okay, all right.
Do you need a?
Just sort of a thumbs up, everyone's okay with it.
Yeah, I think it's an opportunity to help someone who actually wants to try to, you know, in her negotiation, maybe she gives a discount to city employees. I don't know, but, you know, that sort of thing. She wants to make it work, whatever, in a trial basis.
All right. That's what I need.
Council or?
Will this include exploring guidelines? Would this include exploring guidelines for the possibility of adding more food trucks?
It wouldn't eliminate more than multiple food trucks in the same park. I don't think, I mean.
Yeah, it would be the conditions under which we'd permit a food truck to park in one of our properties, on one of our properties.
And this would just authorize y'all to come up with something and come back to us, I guess.
We have to like zoning things, but not the rental.
Not for a city property.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'll, I'll share more information later, but it does. That may be helpful. That was one of my jobs at the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. All right, so Wilson, do you have what you need?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Mr. Daniel.
Yeah. Well, I would like to just say one thing, not to belabor the point, but there was a young woman that spoke earlier and called out our mayor by name. I would like to say that I was very proud to have been there myself. And I was very proud of my fellow Transylvania County residents and citizens who are also there, exercising our constitutional right to peaceful gathering. And to suggest that any one person here is somehow responsible for that is misguided. And, and I would say that if you are going to call anyone out, you can call me out too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Ms. Holder.
Gary touched on my feelings and I was going to ask our attorney what is our recourse when this is the second week in the last two meetings that someone has been called out, particularly our mayor during this meeting. So how can we establish, the guideline is established, but how can it be enforced?
I don't think you can. It's a time for public comment and it is, it is rude and inappropriate and certainly violates the guidelines. But I think we run into significant issues when we attempt to restrict speech by anybody. I just, by example, I go to lawyer conferences and there's one town where there's a person who takes their entire three minutes and repeats the same word over and over and over and over and over. Just stands there and repeats the same word. There's one guy who dresses up as a clown and squeaks a horn. And they, the people will bring their most, so this is.
Let's not give any more.
It's unfortunate, yeah. It's unfortunate, but it is the First Amendment. And as a governmental body, we have the, the duty to maintain that First Amendment right to speak. And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that's, it's very rude, but it's, it is probably the, the only recourse.
I have a very thick skin, Mr. Attorney.
Free speech is.
I'm aware of that.
Free until it's not free anymore. I wanted to also say that I had to miss the, um, the hands-off event on Saturday because of a family thing that came up. But in the progression of the numbers that we see, I think she said from one thirty to two hundred to hands-on, hands-off to three hundred. And what that says is that people are interested in standing for the masses and when we stand together in a united way, it speaks volumes. And hopefully, the people who really need to hear the volumes that we're speaking across the United States will hear soon. You know, how important it is and what the message is that's out there and taking care of each other and taking care of these United States citizens in, in a way that, you know, we look forward to continuing to live here.
Thank you, Ms. Holder. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I'll be brief, I promise, I promise. Go Gators. That, I, I'm also going to comment on, on what was said earlier. And honestly, I'm surprised to hear that, that there were any paid protesters there because I didn't seem to get my check in the mail. I guess I'm still waiting on that. But I, I do want to harp on that point in particular because it is a lie and it is a dangerous lie because it means that you don't have to reckon with the fact or accept that your neighbors may have a difference of opinion than you do. And it is an easy lie to say on cable news, but staring in the face of the people that you're addressing who happen to be there is really beyond the pale. So I, I just want to echo what others have said, that I'm proud to have a mayor and a council and a country, frankly, that supports the First Amendment and has a history of protest, particularly a history of protest to win, win our rights. And the people screaming for order in Boston during the Boston Tea Party happened to be the people that we were trying to fight for independence from. And so protest is a, is a proud history in this country and peacefully protesting, of course, which is what we saw on Saturday, I think will continue and hope it will continue as long as there is progress to be made and rights to be won. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Wise.
I'm going to talk about this a little bit, but not, maybe not in that frame of reference. First of all, public speakers who come and talk to us are very important and I don't think anyone would want to disenfranchise them. We had two people come to us tonight and although I can, I think they came from very different sides, had talked a little bit about the locals only versus outsiders, whether it's don't focus on the tourists or paid protesters coming into our community. I think spring is here and we are going to see tourists come into our community. They are our lifeblood and I'm personally getting pretty fed up with this locals versus tourists or locals versus somebody else rhetoric. We are here, up here at your pleasure, to serve Brevard as a community and look after the well-being of Brevard. And I don't see any benefit trying to separate out who is benefiting our community. Locals benefit it, tourists benefit it. We all are here because we love this community. So I would encourage those who come and speak to us or think that one or the other are bad, just to remember that we are all one thing here and that we need to survive and to do that, we need to work together. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
I'm going to go a little off. I, I've already, I've already spoken more than I like to, but I want to, I want to express from here that I appreciate Mr. Shanky sitting here in the front row and, and expressing his opinion in a polite, generally appropriate way. And I want to thank you personally for that. We obviously disagree on a wide range of things, but he's always polite and he's, and he's doing it the right way. And I hold him up as an example as opposed to some of the things we saw tonight. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
And nothing for me, thanks.
Mr. Manager.
Just a reminder that our budget workshop is this Friday at eight-thirty in the morning in this room. We will provide lunch for the participants. The notebooks with the workshop information will be able to wrap up tomorrow now that we've got your affirmation of the priorities. And unless I hear otherwise, we will hand-deliver those to your homes at around four-thirty or five tomorrow. If you'd like for us to leave it for you here, please let me know, or else we'll deliver it to you at around that time. That's all my comments.
Couple of announcements. We've got a number of things coming up that I hope everyone is aware of. Of course, our, our budget workshop Friday, which I do encourage the public to come to. We're going to be making some very hard decisions about what is funded. And, you know, this is your chance to really hear that discussion. There will be a public input session for you to tell us if you agree with the decisions that we make or not. But again, exercise your right for the transparency that we go out of our way to provide to the public on everything that we are doing. So please, I encourage you to come. If not for all of it, come for part of it. But we also have a number of other things coming up. I think after Hurricane Helene, after the fires, disaster preparedness is very high in everybody's mind right now. And the city has stepped up. We are working with the county. It's very much of a collaborative effort, their emergency services folks. We are giving a disaster preparedness seminar on April twenty-third from two to four-thirty in the Rogo Room. It's going to talk about how to be prepared, how, what to pack in a, in a go-bag, how to get alerts, how to sign up for our system, for the county system, what to expect if you have to evacuate to a shelter. This is useful information. It's free, it's open to everybody. I'm very, very pleased at the, the joint cooperation between the city and the county in putting this together, and I encourage people to come to that.
What's the time again?
It's two to four-thirty on the twenty-third in the Rogo Room. I also want to announce our poetry contest. Every year, for, this is the fifth year, we've had a poetry contest. It was started by Mary C Jenkins Board. This year, Mary C Jenkins has partnered with our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee. I'm on that committee. That committee is the county, the city, and a number of our nonprofits getting ready to celebrate in July of 2026, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of our country. And we have a poet, so we, the theme of this year. And we have a poet, so we, the theme of this year's poetry contest is U.S. Revolutionary Heroes. And it can be a well-known hero, or it can be somebody that hasn't gotten a lot of the recognition for what they did for our country. It is open to all ages. The instructions are on the poster here. It is on our website, it's on our Facebook page. I love it. It's by age group. I've gone to every single one of the four award ceremonies since we started this. We give it out by age group. There are cash prizes. And I'm just encouraging people, this is a wonderful way to learn about our history, to learn about our values, to learn about what we talk about, about what is so important that we went into a revolution to get it. And those are the values that we've talked about here tonight. The value to be able to assemble, the value to be able to speak a dissenting opinion peacefully without threat, without fear. That is the foundation of our country. And that goes right back to what our patriotic forebearers, what our revolutionary fathers fought so hard to put in place. And so I encourage you, think about participating in the poetry contest. If you have children, this is a wonderful opportunity to get them to participate. Grandchildren also, for some of us, anyways. So that's coming up. We also have Arbor Day coming up. You know, we talked about green space. We talked about how much our community valued green space in the DFI presentation. Well, Arbor Day is on April 25th. Every year for Arbor Day, we go out and we plant more trees. And we have been a Tree City USA for, help me out here, Wesley, or Becky, or somebody, 43 years?
Forty-six.
Well, on paper, it's going to be 45.
Forty-five. We have been a Tree City for 45 years. Well, we are going to be planting some more trees, and we always do this in conjunction with schoolchildren, to get them to understand and be part of this. And so Public Works will be getting some trees, they'll be digging the holes, and we'll have the kids help plant the trees. And it's going to be at 3:30 at the Community Garden Area on April 25th. Did I get all that right? Okay, good. But again, it's a wonderful way to teach the value of our environment, of our beautiful trees, to our young folks, and to, again, continue to make this a wonderful, green, environmentally pleasant city for people to live in. So lots of upcoming events. And finally, I just want to say, well, I'll also say, I have a meet the mayor at City Council Chambers from 5:00 to 7:00 on April 24th. And I am always willing to listen to people who do not agree with me. If you do not think that I am headed in the right direction, if you think I've made some poor decisions, I am happy to hear that, and I am happy to talk with you about it. This is your opportunity at Meet the Mayor, to talk to me one-on-one, unlike standing here and having three minutes. We've got two hours that night for anybody that wants to come. I'm holding in the evening, so if you actually work, you can come after you're at work. So take advantage of this, and let's have a civil, open discussion if we have differences of opinion on things. So I invite people that don't agree with me to come see me face-to-face in an informal setting, and let's talk about it. And finally, I just want to say, I was really proud of my city Saturday. Yes, we had a demonstration. It is the largest demonstration that I have ever seen in downtown Brevard. And I've been to a lot of demonstrations over the years down there. We had between 300 and 400 people. It was peaceful, it was well-behaved, there was no, there was not even any name-calling violence. It was, it was, it was a positive, uplifting expression by people of their concerns. And they, the police were there. I want to compliment our police department. They did a wonderful job. I don't think we had any incidents, Chief, right? Nothing, nothing, with this huge crowd down there. And out of those 300 to 400 people, I probably know 98% of them, okay? They are all residents here. They are not paid outsiders. I don't know where these stories start. These are our neighbors. These are the people that we live with day in and day out. And if you've been there, you would have recognized every single person at that event. But they were there expressing their opinion, expressing their First Amendment rights. And I was proud to be there, because one of the things that I did as both a military officer and as an elected official, is I raised my hand and I swore, I swore to defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And when I think our Constitution is being violated, when it's being in question, when it's not being upheld, I will speak out. And I don't expect any less from anybody that took an oath of office. Our Constitution is the foundation of everything that we stand for, everything that we as elected officials are here to represent. And so I am proud of our town, I am proud of being part of that event on Saturday. And I expect there probably will be more events, but we certainly do not curtail the ability of people in this community to speak out in an organized, permitted fashion and within all of their legal rights. So again, thank you, Brevard, and thank you, everybody that was there, and thank you to my other elected officials for your comments tonight. I appreciate that. And again, I encourage people, come and see me and talk to me, and maybe I'll change your mind. So with that, I think it's time to go into closed session.
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session for pending litigation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session. Please clear the room and turn off the broadcast.